The time for the June 15th. For the June 15th. Meeting of the whole. For a special. Not a special council, this is for. I'm sorry, can you hear me Keith? For the special. Public hearing. Regarding the Community Development Block Grant. Approval or update of the. A plan, their annual plan, roll call please.
Alderman Bolton, present.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Moseo.
Present.
Alderman Kirkwood. I'm sorry, Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Dino.
Present.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Turner. Alderman Turner.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian. Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham. We have a quorum, sir.
Alderman Kirkwood is here.
Thank you.
We will be turning the meeting over to.
Urban Development gave us entitlement funds to prevent, prepare, and respond to the COVID-19 crisis. The city of Waukegan, we received $470,215 in Community Development Block Grant funds, Care Act funds. We, we are doing the amendment to include. To include. Items that would address community needs and the categories are public services in the amount of. One thousand, one thousand seventy-six, two hundred and fifteen dollars. And that would be to provide essential resources and. And, and human services such as rental assistance, utility, food, etc. With the economic development, we would. We want to. I'm sorry, do the CARES Act funding for the $200,000 and that would go toward. Us partnering with entities in the community to be able to buy direct assistance for businesses that were affected by. And then the other thing that we're doing the amendment for would be for program income, program income in the amount of $94,000. That would be for us to use for planning, the administration, and maintaining the compliance of the. Activities that we would fund, that we would fund. And that's basically it, what we're asking for the amendment for.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Larissa, as you all know, these are additional CARES dollars that came into the city directly. After speaking with Larissa and her staff who need these dollars the most, are there any questions?
What was that first category and amount?
Um, public services. Um, public services and it was for a hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, it was Alderman Tate, Alderman Turner, any other questions?
I have a question, who would be example of the frontline when you said those in the frontline?
Alderman Bolton. From, I'm gonna respond when I say frontline, as you know, we try to move these funds to. Frontline agencies, some of the frontline agencies will consist of, I know Catholic Charities, Community Action Project. Has, has, HACES. Not HACIA, but HACES, H-A-C-E-S. Larissa, you have a couple, I'm trying to go off memory here, where are the other ones?
Um.
Safe Place.
What we wanted to do, what we wanted to do, so we did an, before we did, we did, we did an amendment for COVID-related activities. We are, we're wanting to also extend that to other agencies in the community that we have not funded in the past. So CAP would be one of those that he mentioned. Two-one-one was another agency that we spoke to. Family First was something that we were thinking about reaching out.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Bolton, then Alderman Taylor, Alderman Bolton?
Oh, I had said Safe Place to sound like Alderman was echoing the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, Safe Place, they currently receive funding. And does PADS receive funding too, or yes, they do.
Okay. Yeah, a lot of the, a lot of the agencies that we currently fund right now and everyone, we work with them, we work with them so many on many different levels. On top of that, we, we know exactly what they're doing. See, we don't have to reinvent the wheel with them or kind of walk them through the process. And because those agencies have all of the surrounding or supporting. Agencies that help them out with our mutual clients. That's one of the reasons we're probably, not probably, we're gonna move to pushing those dollars to them. And then some other agencies that are, that are doing some things that, where those bigger agencies. Might miss or have a different market, so like I said, between Larissa, myself and her staff. And some senior level staff members and talking to, to our partners on the service sector. Throughout Waukegan, we're really gonna identify what's, what's the, we've really identified the best way to utilize these dollars. But more importantly, get them out quickly. And that's, that's, that's our biggest goals, getting them out quickly.
Your honor.
Okay, we got Alderman, Alderman Moseo, then Alderman Newsom.
Just real quick, how much did? The county get, did the county get any money?
Yes, they got some, I know it was in the millions.
Alderman Moseo, they received one hundred and tw- one hundred and twenty-two million dollars.
Again, I want to get back to my, my point on that, you know, we, no, we give pads some money, but you know, honor, we. Every year we revisit about that, we have got to have a serious conversation with the county about helping us. With our homeless prob- problem and our pads problem and get a better location and a better fit. For that situation, I mean, it, it always seems to fall on, on, on us and you, particularly in our police department. We know it's not just a Waukegan problem, it's a county problem. But we get, we get stuck, I shouldn't say stuck, but it seems like it always falls in our lap. And again, they got that building for free, I get it. But we need to have a serious discussion with the county and we need to get some of that money, I think. In ear market for, for pads from the county and the county needs, in my opinion, take the lead on it because it's not. It's not a, it's not a, a city of Waukegan, just our problem, it's, it's the whole county's problem. So I'd like us to try to get a little bit more help from them because then. It falls on you and, and it's in Alderman Newsom's war, she's getting all the calls and. It's just, it's a bigger problem than that, it's not one Alderman's problem or one mayor's problem, so I just wanted to make that comment, that's all.
And, and to add to that, Alderman, we had an opportunity to, Janet, I'm sorry, the city clerk. Kelly and I had an opportunity to visit Lake's Behavior Hospital. For those who have not seen, we're probably gonna be setting up some, some times for you to walk through and see. Exactly where they're at with the new building, it's up and running. And the old building, they're, they're in the midst of looking for individuals to either occupy that building or buy. I tell you. City clerk Kelly and I, after walking through and what they said, they're looking for individuals who are, who could occupy that building. That would be the ideal spot for a Lake County pads. Facility, and I tell you why, if you take a look at what pads came from. Lake County pads was in Building Five at the, on the old, we called it Downey, but now is. It is, what's the new name of it? Yeah.
Captain A Level.
Yeah, Captain A Level slash Grayslake Hospital on their grounds. And they gave them Building Five, which had about four levels, not level, four floors. So them to operate their entire operation, not a portion of it. So when that facility moved to, because they were, they were centralized and for veterans. Then they moved to the building here and on Grand Avenue. Unfortunately, they could not move their entire operations. And this, and this is why, this is why there's problems with, with how they're operating that building, in my opinion. Because they bought a portion, but that portion was never communicated to everybody in the streets who utilizes pads. So now what are we getting, we're getting a portion of it and then the balance is out throughout Waukegan in the streets. On our city streets, this is why I've said this to them, Alderman Moseo is this, if you want. A patch location to be centralized in Waukegan, then you have to do it right. We need a total facility, just as McHenry County has one, DuPage County has one, and Kenosha County has one. In Milwaukee, they have a facility, which, which is about thirty to forty thousand square feet. Where they can house and do all of the things they need in order to operate a homeless and. Other surrounding services that's needed for their clients that come in. The model they have today, just, it does not fit what is needed for them to handle the clients that they have. And then what happens now, they push that problem onto Waukegan Police, Waukegan Fire, onto the streets of the business people within our community. And to your point, Alderman Moseo, you're absolutely right, and this is what we have been pushing all along. This is a county problem, how do we solve this or resolve this issue countywide with the support of Waukegan? Okay. We're gonna have, we're gonna Alderman Newsom, Alderman, Alderman Bolton, Alderman Turner, then Alderman Kirkwood, Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, I had a question regarding the second category, economic development. Working with eligible businesses. How, how is that gonna be carried out, is that businesses that were affected? With the shutdown or, you know, how, how are you gonna do, they have to apply for this monies or what? How do they do that?
So, so in a perfect world, what we want to do is, for example, the Black Chamber, Waukegan Chamber. SBAs, local banks, be able to partner with them so that they would be able to administer the program on our behalf. And they would have to prove that they were affected by the COVID. Due to the, due to the shutdown, we would be able to provide funding for them to be able to get them back on their feet. Different categories, it could be used for, you know, payroll or if they needed for. You know, something they need to do on the facility, you know, it would be various categories that they would, we would then be able to address. As long as it is. To prevent, prepare for and to respond to COVID-19.
Oh, where would we, where would we, excuse me, direct a person to contact if they fall into, you know, this category?
So currently, we would, we would be soliciting the entities to be able to run the programs. So then at that point, us, the city would prefer them to the entity so that they can get the assistance that they need.
Okay, so we, we could direct a person to the city, the city would let them know who they can contact, Black Chamber? Or small business bank or whatever.
Right, exactly.
Okay, if I may add to that, Larissa, we, we kind of, we looked at the Black Chamber of Commerce. We looked at our own Waukegan. Waukegan Chamber of Commerce, which is housing Waukegan, the city hall, we looked at the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, which they have some. And, and there was one more, I know those were, those were the three initially, so we want to do is, is reach out to those agencies. To let them know what our process is, how that, and then push everyone to those particular agencies. And the reason being is, we're, that's not what we do, we, we don't process these type of loans, we don't look at those. Those particular organizations do, they're five oh one C three, so let's move the dollars from us to them. So then they can do all the vetting and we then send everyone to, to those particular agencies who can handle that and, and they know. Who, who's in need, much sooner than we do. Okay, Alderman Bolton, then Alderman Turner.
Yeah, I just wanted to validate the point, I'm glad we're addressing the issue with pads because a great percentage of pads are those with mental health conditions. And so I'm glad to hear that some of these dollars are gonna go to agencies like that, because they do. You know, because those that walk on the street and. Have other issues, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, thank you ma'am, Alderman Turner, then Alderman Kirkwood, no, sorry, Alderman Kirkwood and Alderman Turner, I apologize, Alderman Kirkwood, you had your hand up first sir, go ahead sir. Alderman Kirkwood?
He's frozen.
We're gonna go to Alderman Turner and back to Alderman Kirkwood, Alderman Turner?
Well, thanks, hey, so I'm, I'm just kind of curious how this works because, you know, we are in the third, in the second quarter, at the end of the second quarter, moving into the third quarter in two weeks, right? So all these agencies have already been funded, right? And, I mean, pick one, pick an agency that came to CDVG. Asked for a, a grant back in the fall and over the winter and that grant was awarded, right? And now they're coming back asking for additional funding, but two things, one, they've already obviously been funded. And two, they've been, may have received funding from CDVG. And there may be other programs or entity monies and they've been funded since January through June now, January to be July. They've already been funded and now they come back and say, hey, you know what, give us some more of that extra money that you guys have over there. Meanwhile, there may be another organization on the side that, that didn't get any money, so how are we, how are we qualifying?
Okay, so, so, okay, so, let's explain this, so. Initially, last year, back in twenty nineteen, we had agencies come out and apply for CDVG funding. Regular CDVG funding to be able to do public service agencies. We funded those agencies, they have funding and that funding was due to be spent April thirtieth, twenty twenty. So that funding is done, we're done with that.
Okay.
So, at the end of, at the end of that year, I came to you guys in May and I did. An amendment for any money that was left over and then other programs where it wasn't spent. And then we get, we did the amendment and gave those other agencies for the urgency of the COVID-19.
Okay.
Now, this is another set of funding, this is the CARES Act funding. It is CDVG, but it's entitled specifically for COVID and it's the CARES Act funding. So this money is now what I'm presenting before you now. And then we have these three categories and like you said, I would like to reach out to other agencies that has not been funded in the past. To give them opportunity to be able to apply for the funding and. Apply for the funding. And they, you know, has to be, you know, urgent need, you know, for COVID only, not just for a regular program that somebody want to fund. It's only for COVID-related. You know, issues or concerns, and so that's where we're at now. So for us, I'm putting out an application, it'll be done in. Before the end of June, in which we'll put out and we will advertise to. You know, everyone, however, we will pay close attention to people who have not been funded. And they have to be five oh, five oh one C threes and other things that they need in order to qualify. So this is what we're doing, we're providing an opportunity for other agencies that had not been funded in the past. That we can now fund them now with this amendment. And this money.
All right, thanks, Larissa.
Alderman Taylor, and then one more, and then after that, Alderman, we need to open up for public comment, Alderman Taylor.
Was Waukegan Main Street one that we were talking about in this, or are they not part of this, they do something different?
Waukegan Main Street, they currently have funding that they need to spend and, and because of that. They're, they would need to be able to spend their funding first in order, before we give them any more money.
Okay, yeah, and, and let me just, I'm gonna add to that real quick, I, I think one of the reasons Main Street was not able to spend because of the COVID-19. A lot of businesses were, were closed, but I think Josh has said they, they had those, those dollars allocated. But what we, well, I think one of Larissa, and I think one of, one of the, one of the stipulations is. Before we give more money, we have to show that you're able to spend the existing dollars. And I think that's gonna happen over the next three or four weeks as all the other business come in, because they had a lot of things on the table. They just went out to do over the last two months, three months, so we're fine on that one. But we, they came into mind Alderman Taylor, because we know what they do for, for a lot of our downtown companies. But, but, but thanks for asking, this would be the last one, Alderman Kirkwood, and then we need to open this up for public meeting. But we're gonna be in jeopardy for the public meeting. Alderman Kirkwood?
Well, my question was partially answered, but in addition to that, do we know if the money that we allocated back in May? Has those dollars been spent by those particular agencies that we gave those dollars to?
No, it, it has not been spent yet. So they have until September thirtieth to spend it.
And so we're not gonna, so we're not gonna give those individuals additional money? If they have not spent the money that we allocated for, because of the COVID nineteen? We're not gonna give them additional funds from this particular grant, are we?
No, no, we're looking for other agencies that we can, that we can. Give an opportunity to, the only thing that. It can be a consideration, but it has to be where they are in spending their money. If they haven't spent a dime of the money yet, then we're not gonna be able to provide them with any funding, additional funding. Because we'll still be liable for having that funded spent.
Agencies, we really don't really worry about them spending these dollars because we know that they, you know, an acute example. Your pads, your Catholic charities, your Illinois Food Bank, you know, they're running through things all the time. So I won't necessarily say we won't fund them, we just make sure where they're at, to, to Larissa's point. That if they haven't spent anything at, as of this date, that would be a area of concern, not just for the CARES dollars, but this is just for CDVG as a whole. Is that correct, Larissa?
This, well, this will be for, because we haven't, we haven't allocated CDVG yet, so this is just for the CARES money.
I know what I'm saying, if, even if we gave CARES, if we gave CDB dollars and they have not spent those dollars, that still would be a concern of yours anyway.
Yes.
Okay, so to be clear, all right, so everybody, thank you for the awesome questions and hopefully, again, our goal is to get these funds. For care, from the, from the CARES Act funding out to I call the streets. That's the goal, and Larissa's team, myself and our senior level staff will be making sure that we identify and see what. With that being said, we need to open this up for a public comment. Okay, and we're gonna go public comment to Madam Clerk.
We are open for all the comments. The number that was provided.
Thank you, Ms. Larissa.
I don't have it in front of me to see it.
Pardon me?
I don't have the number in front of me to repeat it.
But you have it on the.
Yeah, it's on the website.
So we're open for public comments?
Alderman, I wish you were here to see this phone right here. You might have a bad phone for Alderman, in the event when we get all get back together.
Number 847-856-6412. It's your final call? We're open for public comment? May I turn it back to you?
All right. We, did we meet the obligation, Corporate Council?
I believe you have.
Okay. All right. As you all know, we were able to have a phone line here at City Hall for the public to call in to voice their opinion or comments regarding the Community Development Block Grant amended plan. With there being none, Doug, we can move to close the.
Yep, you can close the public hearing, and then you need to take a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
With the roll call.
All right, too. We have a motion, a motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Rivera, to close the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseau.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
That's it, sir.
The motion is passed and carried to close the public hearing for Community Development Block Grant amended plan. Thank you, Alderman. We'll see you at seven o'clock. Alderman Felix, Rivera, you know you're up for the prayer. Thank you, sir. All right, do I leave it?
You can leave it.
For the Monday, June. Oh, I'm sorry. The time has come for the Monday, June 15th, 2020, Virtual Regular City Council Meeting for Waukegan, Illinois. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
President.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Muzio.
President.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present, or I, yes, here I am.
President.
Alderman Florian. Alderman.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
You have a quorum, sir.
Okay. Leading an invocation tonight would be Alderman Rivera, may be following the invocation, and we will all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Alderman Rivera.
Thank you. Um, Lord, may your wisdom and love be present amongst us today. Come bless our meeting with unity, hope, and vision. Lord, we pray for unity during these times. Build in us all a deep respect for one another, so that your community may be one. Lord, we pray for hope. Amen.
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 All rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic, which stands one nation, one God, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments. Again, evening, everybody. Good evening, Alderman, and those who are on the line joining us. We have a few mayor's comments. One of them is June 15th, June 15th. I want to start by wishing the public an early happy June 15th celebration in anticipation of June 19th, celebrating the e- the end of slavery in America. Events. As many of you are aware, most communities have officially postponed or canceled their large summer events due to COVID-19 at the recommendation of doctors in the state of Illinois, Illinois Department of Public Health. As many of you already know, the Waukegan Park District previously announced the cancellation of the Independence Day Parade. Similarity. The city is not going to be sponsoring any large summer events this year, which includes our fireworks and scoop, which are not able, which we're not able to safely support at this time. I'm certainly dis- I'm cer- I'm certainly disappointed, just as many as you are. But because canceling these events will only hurt us as we move forward, but I believe as we prepare ourselves for the future of our community and the rest of the state and country, this is the best decision at this time. We will leave open maybe some ideas once we see some safer condition as related to COVID-19 and how we can social distance ourselves or even remove our face covers. But at this time, we need to postpone all of our large events in the city of Waukegan. Thank you for your understanding. These past few weeks, I've been so proud of the dialogue coming out of our young men and young ladies calling for reform. I want everybody to know that we, we hear you, no, better yet, we're listening to you. To hear sometimes means we just hear what they say. But this time, we are listening to these young men and young ladies. And we need to continue to have honest and open conversations. And we, and with those honest and open conversations, we then can initiate strategies that I believe that we, not only the city of Waukegan, but our country can work toward on a federal, local, and state level. I look forward to working with all our local legislators, particularly our Alderman, in the coming weeks and months to prepare us for hopefully different ideas and a different way of operating, not only our city, our state, but our country. To ensure we have a system that serves the residents of our communities and throughout. I don't put emphasis on our young men and young ladies to Outlay County have done some remarkable things to open all of our eyes. And you know, as the mayor, you know, we're, and I know you as Alderman, often, often ask, why do we do this? When you see moments like this, it, it lets you know we're not doing it to be in vain, but we're doing it for, to encourage these young men and young ladies throughout the city of Waukegan. Face covering and test site. Lastly, I want to remind the public, we are still in a covert pandemic. Please, please continue to wear your face masks when you're out in the public. We need everyone collective help. Also, remember that we have a free testing site right in the downtown Waukegan on Water Street, Unshirton Road between Washington and Water. Continue to take advantage of this test site in Lake County. I can also add, Alderman, and those who are listening, that our positive test numbers are coming down. What those numbers are, I'll try to get, not only yourself, a more accurate count of where we were to where we're at, to what we're trying to go to. But I can assure you, I think we're under, under a hundred, if not less, per, per day when it comes to positive testing. Understand, this is, it comes of all of Lake County, but Waukegan's numbers of positive COVID testing results are down. This is FYI to the Alderman. Today, there was a, a major fire at 2323 Grand Avenue, and that's basically in the plaza near Erie Health, Domino's Pizza in that area there for the old schoolers. It is old 31 Flavors building in that plaza. The Waukegan Fire Department has started taking applications for become a Waukegan firefighter. The date started June 15th. The application deadline is August the 28th, 2020. If you saw a huge black smoke going up in our city, no need to fear. That was what we call a controlled burn. For those of you who are quite familiar to on our, we're, I'm gonna give you some historical site. Cologne's, Old Cologne's Grocery Store now is called South Park Grocery Store off Park Avenue in Lake Bluff. It's a little street called Carnation Drive. Well, there was a, a structure down there, which our Waukegan Park District has purchased to expand the open park area. Is that the open park or the trail here?
It's the ravine and the open park.
Yes, the ravine and open park. And for you, for those who remember, you can take the ravine from Belvedere Street, take it all the way down, come up, over, and you can, you will be, you'll end up at, ooh, at Water Street. At Water Street. That ravine, there was a house down there, if I'm not mistaken, it was Old Flower.
Dildger's.
Dildger's.
Florist.
Florist.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, it was Dildger's Florist. It was owned by Laffritti's. Oh, the Laffritti's. Okay, so that building did, what we did, it was called a controlled burn. And what a controlled burn is, is where we do training for our firefighters. So we had about 50 to 60 off-duty firefighters came in for additional training. And you could see it was a big dark plume that was in the air. But it was interesting. It was hot. At the same time, we had a huge alarm, uh, I think four, four alarm fire at 2323 Grand Avenue. But everything is safe and well. Alderman, I think roughly about five businesses were impacted. They should be back up and running within the next five to 10 business days. My last, we did a Waukegan Proud Award for Mr. Marco Louis Montano, correct, Alderman Rivera?
Yes, sir.
That was the name. For those who do not know who this is, Mr. Montano is a former First Ward Alderman back in 68. We were also blessed to have a picture of him being sworn in by the late Mayor Bob Savangen and the city treasurer, the city clerk, and his name was.
Howard Guthrie.
Howard Guthrie.
Guthrie.
That was, that was before my time. So the reason we gave him a Waukegan Proud Award is because Mr. Montano is a US Army and a US Navy veteran. And he received a Purple Heart and three additional medals, which were lost when he was injured. His daughter Darlene called US Congressman, US Congressman Brad Snyder's office to see if he can represent those medals to Mr. Montano. Long behold, he was able to re-represent those medals after, I think, 60 or close to 70 years of him not having them in his possession. I did not know that, and I've been knowing Mr. Montano for a long time, mostly through his hard work and his visionary, uh, been a visionary by forming, one of the founders of the Puerto Rican Society and the Puerto Rican Society Credit Union. That was the extent of his public service, also, you know, being a First Ward Alderman. But who know, right here in our community, he is not just a US Army, but also a US Navy, who was injured and received a Purple Heart. We thought that was warranted of him receiving a Waukegan Proud Award. And as I say all the time, we do not know who lives in our community, and we must then praise them for being the, the, the model that we all try to be. So kudos to Mr. Marco Louis Montano, to his, the Montano family. And just to let you know, he has invited me, Alderman Rivera and I, because he's moving to Puerto Rico this Saturday. He, he did invite us down. But anyway, well, thank you, congratulations to him and his family. With that being said, those are all Alderman's, all mayor's comments. Item two, Resolutions, Proclamation, Presentation, Appointment. We have appointments to the Waukegan Library Board. There's gonna be a motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Newsom, to ratify the appointment of Martha M. Padilla Ramos, EDS to Waukegan Library Board. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton. Hi. Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Muzio.
Hi, I'm sorry.
That's right. Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Turner.
I'm sorry, excuse me, absolutely, aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor. Motion pass.
Motion by, motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Mozio, to ratify the reappointment of Evelyn Smith to the Waukegan, correction, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Mozio, to ratify, uh, their reappointment of Evelyn Smith to the Waukegan Library Board. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Item C, uh, motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Taylor, to ratify the appointment of Hector Brian Escobar to the Waukegan Library Board. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
I am delighted to have one of my neighbors from the Sixth Ward appointed to the library board, and I vote a hearty aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Item three, audience time, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. David Motley, PR Department, will be reading the messages that were sent to the clerk's office prior to four o'clock, up to and including four o'clock. And David will say their names and the dates it was sent, thank you. And they have three minutes.
Let's get right to it. Uh, the first one is sent by Mary Russell, and it was sent on Monday, June first at four oh six PM. Good afternoon, as a resident of Waukegan, I am very concerned, citizen, given the recent events here in our city. What is the city doing to curtail further rioting and looting in our city and neighborhoods? Will the city enlist the National Guard? Will there be a curfew? If so, how will it be effectively enforced? Will the city proactively board up businesses and churches and city buildings potentially at risk? Will the city be issuing alerts both via cell alert and landline? We got neither last night, but did get an alert from Kenosha. What additional things can we do as residents to ensure our safety, that our neighbors and the city? Regards, M. Russell. The second is from Jim Damiano, it was sent on Monday, June first at five fifty-nine PM. Salmon Rowdel, we hope this email finds you both well. We would like the below to be read into public comments section of the city council meeting tonight, or at the next one, if that is not possible. We also need you to respond to us on this. Today is June first, while we understand there is a lot going on right now, and the pandemic protests and looting, we are very unhappy with the lack of communication from the city over the past forty-eight hours. Through random personal social media posts, we learned of protests and more disturbing unorganized looting spree. See attached. We have not received any calls or emails from the city with information, guidance, or updates. On your own recommendation, I called the police department yesterday afternoon at two thirty PM. They had no information other than that they had heard a rumor of a protest. We learned of a protest through our neighbor, Bill, at Cuban experience. We learned of a planned looting spree from a customer's Facebook. I learned of the curfew a few minutes ago from Little Fort Media. On your own recommendation, when I tried to get the city to put in place a communication strategy last year, I checked the Facebook pages of the city of Waukegan, Waukegan Police, Waukegan Main Street, the mayor's page, not a single update. I emailed Thomas Mailard midday on Sunday, he had no confirmed information on protests. No updates at all last night. Our best source of information were Facebook live videos from gang bangers who were looting and streaming that activity. HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot facebook dot com forward slash Gerardo dot Villanueva dot nine four six one forward slash videos forward slash three one 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 nine five nine eight one eight eight six seven five seven two forward slash. We were on site until two AM to protect our business. We cannot make good business decisions if we don't have information and we can't get better information from gang bangers than from our elected officials. That shows the city of Waukegan is failing its business community. We are stressed and getting timely updates from the city would go a long way to ease our pain. We need to step up and get this done and get it done this week. I gave you a blueprint for a strategy, please use it. Jim Damiano, Vice President and General Manager, Chop Horse Feathers, Waukegan, Illinois, United States. And there's an attachment to that. The third is from Diane Verratti, and it was sent on Monday, June first at seven twenty-three PM. Unfortunately, I emailed this letter for audience time at this evening city council meeting in the early afternoon, but somehow I messed up the transmission. Can this be read at the next meeting? Thank you, Diane Verratti. My name is Diane Verratti, twenty-five ninety-seven Club Home Lane in Waukegan. I wish I were able to read this in person. Please listen. My heart is broken for our community, for our people, for our nation, and especially for our brothers and sisters who still under, who still live under the yoke of years of oppression and hatred. Every good and decent person who has watched the murder of a black man at the hands of white police officer has to have a broken heart. The question is, what do you do about it? It's easy to think that since we live in a marvelously diverse community, we are doing all we can, but we are not. I read these words this morning in the Chicago Tribune in a column by Delene Glanton. They have impacted me more than I can explain. White people, you are the problem, regardless of how much you say you detest racism. You are the sole reason it has flourished for centuries, and you are the only ones who can stop it. So I ask you, the leaders of our community, how do we go about doing this? Many of us, white people, look at our city and rationalize that we are doing all we can. After all, we have an African-American mayor, Alderman, fire chief, HR director, Waukegan Main Street president, park district commissioners, and the list goes on. And we have friends who don't look like us. Isn't that proof of our good intentions? It's too easy to pay lip service to liberty and justice for all and let ourselves off the hook. So I ask again, Mayor Cunningham and members of the city council, will you please help us find a way to address this strain on our community? As a Christian, a Christ follower, I have a sincere desire to not just acknowledge this horrendous problem, but actually be change agents for good. As for me, I confess that I have not said it enough, I have not done enough, I have not empathized enough, and most of all, I have not listened enough. May I humbly suggest that we begin there by listening to each other. If we can listen with our hearts as well as our heads, maybe together we can make a way forward. The health of our community and the future depends upon us. Thank you. The fourth one is from Josh Van Dyke, and it was sent on Monday, June fifteenth at twelve fifty PM. First, Waukegan currently has twenty-seven million dollars budgeted to the police. This is at a time where talk of defunding or abolishing the police is being discussed across the country, and after this same city council who approved the budget have expressed concern over the city's deficit multiple times. Please consider putting some of that money towards improving our community's infrastructure. Secondly, what actions are being taken to aid residents and small businesses who have been, who will have difficulty paying several months' worth of rent once the eviction moratorium ends? Joshua Van Dyke, Waukegan resident. The fifth is from Gabriela Varela, and it was sent on Monday, June fifteenth at three ten PM. Hello, I hope this email finds you well. Below are my comments for the city council meeting today. Please let me know that you received my comments. Comment. What social and financial initiatives is the city council carrying on to respond to the Black Lives Matter movement that is taking place in Waukegan? What resources will the city council call upon to better serve the black community? Thank you, Gabriela Varela. The sixth one is from Jocelyn Ruiz Zuniga, and it was sent on Monday, June fifteenth at three forty-seven PM. Greetings, below are my questions, zero six fifteen, twenty twenty, seven PM, council meeting. What are your thoughts on divesting money from the Waukegan Police Department to invest in sustainable social services such as health, housing, welfare, and education services? To give you a little background, I have looked at the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty Waukegan budgets, and at first glance, it may seem that social services are getting a big chunk of our budget. However, if we look at the proportion of citizens that are supposed to be reached with the allocated budget, the ratios are not equitable. If we want to develop a city of progress, we need to start investing more money into long-term services and solutions. Investing in the Waukegan Police Department is the short-term solution, but this short-term solution will never be effective if we are not equitably investing monetary funds to prevent the high demand for the police department in the first place. As the representative of AOC has stated, let's use suburbs to model our development. What do wealth, wealthy suburbs do that we do not? They invest in the most money, sustainable, long-term social services like quality education. I am excited to tune in tonight. Kind regards, Jocelyn Ruiz. The second one is from Jocelyn Ruiz, or seventh one is from Jocelyn Ruiz. And this was sent on Monday, June fifteenth at three fifty-seven PM. Greetings, local leaders. As a young Waukegan native, I'm saddened by the lack of Alderman and mayor's leadership and solidarity that I have seen in the Black Lives Matter movements in Waukegan. This town is made up of majority low-income black and brown people, and the only leadership presence that I have seen in about five to six Waukegan-led marches has been Representative Brad Schneider. Alderman, let's step up. I have seen community activists take on the role you should be playing. I'm looking forward to seeing more action and leadership from the Waukegan Alderman and Sam Cunningham in the near future. Kind regards, Josie. And the eighth one is from Dylan Burdette, and it was sent on Monday, June fifteenth at three fifty-seven PM. In the past few weeks, Columbus, Ohio, Boston, Massachusetts, and Allegheny County, Maryland, have all voted to declare racism a public health crisis in their communities. We have seen in Waukegan the skewed effects of COVID-nineteen on our communities of color, and the disparities have become even more pronounced in ongoing protests against police brutality that we have seen here in Waukegan and across the country, led by our brothers and sisters of color. Moving to address these issues on a citywide level is something that should be considered. Calling systematic racism out as a public health crisis that it is would be a good first step. Dr. Dylan Burdette, PhD. And that concludes audience time for this evening.
Thank you, David.
Motion by, can you hear me now? All right, all right, there's a motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Mozio for consent agenda item four A through four K. Any questions to the motion? Okay, I will be reading the consent agenda. For A, motion to approve regular meeting minutes from Monday, June one, twenty-twenty. For B, motion to ratify and prove the approve an intergovernmental agreement between IE MA and the city of Waukegan for COVID-nineteen testing site. Items for C, motion to approve twenty nineteen Action Plan CARES Act funding amendment. Items for D, proclamation Palinor Week and Saving the Monarch Butterfly. For E, motion to authorize Mayor Cunningham to commit the city of Waukegan to adopting the mayor's monarch pledge and committing to five actions to save the monarch butterfly. For F, motion to approve regular payroll dated June five, twenty-twenty in a total amount of one million six hundred and seven, six hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and four, one million, six hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and four dollars and eighty-two cents. Items for G, motion to approve vendor payments dated June fifteenth, twenty-twenty in a total amount of two million, two hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Items for H, motion to approve PBLC holiday buyback dated June, June fifth, twenty-twenty in a total amount of four thousand, four thousand, seventy-two cents. Items for I, motion to approve final payout names listed on the agenda dated June five, twenty-twenty in a total amount of fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Items for J, motion to approve fiscal in-sit cash out owed dated, owed dated June fifth, twenty-twenty in a total amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. And items for K, motion to approve pay advance COVID-related code correction dated June fifth, twenty-twenty in a total amount of seventeen thousand dollars. Any questions to the motion? Other question, other. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Motion's passing, Carrie. Items, uh, items five, we have water and sewer revenue bond update. Um, on the line now will be Finance Director Tina McGelski, if I'm not mistaken, and Chris Hansen. I think, is Chris gonna take this one?
No, it's, uh, Anthony Maselli from Sphere Financial.
Oh, I'm all the way off. All right, I, I probably missed the Maselli. I know this is part of this team. All right, Mr. Maselli?
All right, bear with me, I'm gonna share screen. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Go ahead, Anthony.
Okay, great. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Alderman. If everybody can hear me okay, Tina has a presentation up regarding the city's twenty twenty water and sewer financing overview. So I will work through this, uh, but please interrupt with, with any questions you may have as, as we go through. Tina, if you want to just flip to page three, the current bonds, that might be a good place to start. Uh, apologize, this is a, a little small, at least it is really small for me looking at a cellphone. But, eh, starting on page three, this is an overview of the city's current uh, water and sewer revenue bonds that are outstanding. Right now, the city has a series two thousand and ten D, two thousand and twelve C, and most recently, we issued water and sewer revenue bonds in two thousand and eighteen. Those are the two thousand and eighteen C bonds. In total, currently, there's just over twenty-two million in principal amount outstanding of water and sewer revenue bonds. Annual debt service that's paid on the bonds uh, is approximately one point eight to one point nine million dollars uh, through, uh, around fiscal year two thousand and thirty-four, and then drops to just under one point two million dollars until the current bonds are, are all paid off. If we flip to page five and talk specifically about the two older series of bonds that the city has, uh, the two thousand and ten D bonds are going to be callable in December of this year, December thirtieth of twenty-twenty. So the city has the opportunity to refinance these bonds at a lower interest rate. Currently, there is just under one point two million dollars of par remaining of that. Of that, $1,090,000 will be callable, which means we can refinance that at lower rates. The, the rates on the callable portion of those bonds is 4.5 to 5%. And those bonds matured through 2031. We flip to the next page, Tina. The 2012C bonds are also callable on the same day, December 30th, 2020. The rates on these bonds are a little bit lower than the 2010Ds. Range from 3 to 3.25%. The remaining par is just over 6 million, and the callable par that we can refinance will be $5,685,000. And then, looking at the city's current capital needs for its water and sewer system, the spreadsheet on page eight, I think if we, if we look towards the bottom and maybe start with capital outlay, you'll see that going forward, we've got 2020 estimates, 2021 estimates, and carrying through. With a capital spend of around $7 million per year, the current cash and investments in the water and sewer fund drops pretty dramatically down to zero by 2024. So there, you know, at, at this current spending level of capital, there, there needs to be a cash infusion to keep above the, the goal to remain over 33% in unrestricted cash. So that's another topic that we'll discuss with the 2020 bond financing. So I've, I've done two things with the, with the financing presentation here. We'll talk about the new money and we'll talk about the refinancing separately, and then I'll show them combined. On page 10, you'll see just a, a representation of a new money for capital issuance done in, in 2020. And, and again, you've got your existing debt service as currently outstanding, the 2010Ds, 12Cs, and 18Cs. And, and this is the debt service, so this is the, the total payments principal and it, and interest due each year. And towards the right, you can see what a, a $15 million financing over 20 years layered in would look like. Existing debt service would go from what is currently going to be paid in fiscal '21 of $1.96 million to, to a little over $2.9 million, increasing to $3 million until the 2010Ds and 12Cs are paid off and then dropping back down. And then if we look at the next page of the refunding, again, the 10Ds and 12Cs are callable and can be refinanced. So this portion of the bond issue would be the refunding of those bonds and replacement with new bonds at lower interest rates. Right now, the estimate is just under $440,000 in savings, total savings, almost $40,000 a year in, in the early years, and then dropping to just about $20,000 in the later years where it's only the 12Cs that were amortized in those years. Present value savings is almost $370,000, or, or just under 5.5% PV there. On a combined issue basis, so when we layer in both the new money and the refunding, which is on page 12, you'll see, again, we've got the, the existing debt service represented on the left. You'll have your, your new 2020 bonds towards the middle of that page, which would be a, a full financing of 21.2, and that's an estimated amount to provide for 15 million in new money, plus the refinancing of the 10Ds and 12Cs. And then you would remove less the refunded debt service. That, that represents taking off the 10Ds and 12Cs, that will no longer exist after the refinancing. And what you're left with is an estimated debt service of, of around 2.9 million, staying below 3 million through 2033 fiscal year 33, and then, and then dropping back down to 2 points, just under 2.3 through the life. And then two, two later years where only the 20 would be outstanding. Page 13 shows the estimated sources and uses, so you get a, a sense of, of what the, the 21.2 as estimated million-dollar issue would, would be used for. As mentioned, 15 million was the number we used for, for project fund proceeds. You'll see that on the, on the right with the deposit to the project fund. Just under 6.9 would go into an escrow to refinance the, the 2010Ds and 2012C bonds. There would be, there would need to be, because this would be a water and sewer revenue bond, a deposit to the debt service reserve fund, and that's represented at 1.8 million. However, the, the city does currently have debt service reserve funds available that are related to the bonds we'd be refunding, so we would apply those funds and, and buy down that amount. So you wouldn't have to borrow for the full debt service reserve. And then the, the underwriters discount estimated costs and bond insurance premium are in there as estimated, based on a par issue of that size. Going to page 14, this is now the same chart as before, showing the, the same capital outlay and spending through 2025. And what you'll see is that $15 million bond proceeds line item has, has been added for fiscal '22. And, and with that, it keeps the cash investments line above the 33% through the period being reported here, the 2025. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Alderman? I will say that we're gonna be working with our water department. One of the things that I see that is certainly in need is probably more so in the ninth ward and out north by the airport is what I call looping our water lines out by River Road, some out there and out by Oak Plain Road, certainly water tanks or towers in preparing ourselves for making sure that our the, the pump stations are accurate and, and up to date. These are just the investments that we're gonna need for ourselves in Waukegan to make sure that we are adequately serving, servicing not only our existing customer, but looking to add new customers over the next 10 to 15 years. So those are some things I'm gonna be talking with Tina and, and Antonio about as we move forward. Are the other questions, we have Alderman Bolton, Alderman Bolton?
So who would, some of the, who would be some of the new customers? That you're referring to?
Well, right now, our new, the new customers, we're looking at a new, other cities. It could be, whether it be Antioch, Gurnee, Fox Lake, Wausworth, whomever we, as we start preparing ourself, our, our water, our water plant for that, the, the capabilities of producing, I think we're looking at 23 million gallons a day. We have opportunity to go and sell that 23 million gallons of water outside of what we're using right now, we're using between with 10 to 15 right now, Tina, per day capacity?
We have higher capacity than that, but that is about what we pump on average, yes.
Yeah, and that takes care of our, the city of Waukegan, our existing customers. So we have the access to, to go after more business, certainly west, on the western part of this, of the, of the county with our water plant. And that's, that's just where we're going, folks, but we, we must be prepared for that. And this is part of that preparation. Okay?
Mayor, one of the big things is we have a larger water allocation. So every, 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 every city or every water plant has so much allocation as to how much water they can take out of a commission. We fortunately have a large allocation that we're not using.
Okay, and that's, and that's another good point. Alderman Taylor is gonna be next, that's another good point. We must start taking advantage of the opportunities that we have here. And that's just, you know, the bottom line for us. This would then help us as we try to bring in new clients to, you know, soften some of the, some of our existing cash flow problems. Alderman Taylor?
Some of our other new customers can be our existing Waukegan residents who are on well and septic that may or may not choose to go on city water, but at this point, they haven't really had that option. The other question, my main question was, is there any trend that some of these interest rates might go lower as the year plays out and we get closer to that December 30th date?
So it, I'll tell you that we obviously are coming off of a huge disruption in the market with the COVID situation. All issuance basically stopped after February, and, and things are starting to get back to, to what is normal, and rates are, are down quite a bit again to, to really, really low levels. You know, I hesitate to use the word historic that everybody uses, but it's, it's, rates are, are really in a good spot right now. Long-term, you know, I don't, sure, they, they can certainly go lower. And the, the timing of this is that we would be in the market most likely in August or September and close in October. And, and why I think it's important we don't go any later than that is we are then coming up to a presidential election. And if four years ago taught us anything, that could sway the markets, good or bad, but we don't know. So, so I, I would hesitate to go any later than that. I would like to have this closed by October. We also have the fact that the 2012Cs and 2010Ds are callable in December, December 30th. And we can only close within 90 days of that call date, or I'm sure, I'm sorry. We can only close as early as 90 days before that call date to make this a current refunding and do it as, on a tax-exempt basis. Otherwise, we'd have to issue the bonds as taxable, and, and that would cost additional interest rates. So, so the timing right now, we're, we're in a good spot to start this process and start the dialogue with assuming a September-ish sale, you know, come back to city council in August or Sep- or September, and then sell the bonds in September, close in October.
Now's the time to do it.
Yeah, it's really fantastic rates right now.
Alderman, thank you, Alderman Taylor, and good point on existing residents, particularly in your ward, I think is that they went subdivisions on well and water, and they've asked already. They're very interested, Alderman, and we certainly need to loop up in there. And I want to get, I want to get that done, ma'am, that's, that's critical. And I'll talk to you offline a little bit more why.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, well, you know already, but Alderman Kirkwood?
I have a question in terms of how much money will we save by refinancing those bonds approximately?
The estimates right now are just under $440,000 over the life of the issue.
Okay, and once we've refinanced, if those rates go down lower than what they are now, is there a timeline where you cannot go back and refinance again after you've refinanced the bonds before?
Yeah, unfortunately, with municipal bonds, they don't work quite like a mortgage where you can prepay anytime. So once you issue the new bonds, those wouldn't be callable again. So we couldn't refinance them again for a period of about eight years. It depends on when we set that date, but the typical norm in the municipal market is eight to 10 years.
So it's, so there's, is there any way of not getting locked in? What's the advantage of being locked in for eight years versus a lower time period? So that if the rates went down, we could look at refinancing those bonds again?
You, you, because you can certainly issue bonds with a shorter call date, but what happens is you then pay a penalty in interest rate. The, the investors that are buying the bonds with a shorter than normal, what is in the market normal call date, will then require you to pay more. So you, you pay for that hedge essentially, and then if you end up not using it, it becomes a waste. I will say, you know, certainly rates can go lower, but, you know, given where they are now, it's, it's a nice burden to hand at 440,000 and almost 6% savings.
If I may, if I may explain, the reason, the reason people want a longer, longer time period, is they want to be guaranteed that this money's going to come to them. That's why they're, that's why they're looking for a longer rate, a longer time period.
Yeah.
And therefore, they get a slightly lower rate, which is an advantage to us.
Right, i- i- if you own a bond due in 2030, you don't want the, the issuer of that bond to be able to take it out anytime. You bought the bond that matures in 2030. Now, you know, over eight years, eight to 10 years, it's understood that you're likely gonna get that bond called.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, oh, thank you, Anthony, thank you, Tina. For giving us that feedback, and certainly we'll be looking to bring something back to the Alderman as we move forward with, with this process of refinance.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Alderman.
Thanks, Tina.
As you know, there's other things on the, for reports and communication, finance and purchase committee reports, treasuries report, and pension report. I strongly suggest that all of you take a look at the pension report, and any questions from that, feel free to call Tina myself. All right, item six, there being none. Item seven, I'm gonna go to Alderman Newsome. Is Alderman Newsome, Alderman Muzio? Is Alderman Newsome, Alderman Newsome?
All right, thank you. Item A, motion to approve Kane McKenna and Associates Incorporated, 150 North Whacker Drive, Suite 1600, Chicago, Illinois, 60606 as consultant for Tax Increment Financing, TIF, and Business Improvement District, BID, study for the approximate area identified in the city's request for proposals and further to authorize Corporation Council to finalize an agreement, and the mayor and clerk to sign such contract in the amount not to exceed $50,000, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Muzio. Any other questions to the motion? Alderman Florian?
I don't really have a question, but I just want to make sure I point out, I talked to Noel about this today, and when we first authorized the request for proposal on this, people were up in arms that there was gonna be a TIF for the casino. I just want to emphasize, here it is again, we're not giving a TIF to the casino. Noel suggested that once this comes back to us, we actually think about specifying in an ordinance that the casino won't qualify for the TIF, and I just want to say that publicly and out loud, so we don't take any more guff from the public about the casino.
Well, let me, let me clear it up. I'm gonna be very clear, I'm gonna be very direct. Our intentions, as long as I'm the mayor of this city, is not to be giving money to a casino. Period. So that's final, let's make, we're gonna put that final, and I, and I, probably I'll put that to a vote right now. We all will say no to that. The other thing is, is this, it has always been clear, whenever we did not only a TIF with this, but a TIF for our, for bridge construct, it was for infrastructure. So it doesn't come out of our pockets with our general fund dollars, or had the bond for that. That is what's the sole purpose, not only for bridge, but also for this. But being, you know, being the mayor, and then obviously, obviously for all the aldermen, we are not, have not, not even considered looking at giving TIF dollars to a casino. You know, and just take a look at it. Why would we give casino, I mean, TIF dollars to someone who, who needs to purchase our property? That just doesn't make sense. So for anyone to even suggest that, we must, we must all, all of us, from my, from the mayor to all the aldermen, put a, a very, a very definite, this will not happen. And what, and then, and then emphasize what our purpose is for these TIF dollars, infrastructure. And the key infrastructure here for us, ladies and gentlemen, will be this. The toll authority, we hope to be lobbying them to get up and, to get us an off-ramp going what, south? That will not just enhance for That will not just enhance for, uh, you know, for a casino, but are all of our commerce, for all commerce going uh, from the north, going to the south to be able to get off at Belvedere. That is critical and we must be thinking about those kind of things and we need to have those kind of dollars in order to invest in ourselves. So, Alderman Florian, I'm glad that you brought that up and I'm glad you were very adamant about as a legislator, an Alderman for this community. But I'm going to echo that, we will not and cannot use any TIF dollars for specifically for a casino. Now, I will say this, if an opportunity of another business decides they want to, to, you know, uh, make Waukegan their home in that, in that area, of, of course, you must be open to those, bring those in and see what those things are. But it certainly will not be any type of casino for that area. They're going to come in with their own financing. Okay? Thank you, Alderman Florian, and I hope we've made that extremely clear tonight. We have Alderman Rivera has his hand up. Alderman Rivera.
Yeah, just a, a quick question. Um, have we, have we used these consultants in the past for, um, you know, establishing and, and getting information regarding the TIF districts?
Yes, sir. We have. Yeah, they've, they've been pretty much our, uh, you know, obviously our go-to. Okay. Put it out, but they, they've done very, very well and I would love for you or anyone else to sit down and talk to them so you can go through. This is a very long process, man. Uh, so, but yes, uh, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Wait, wait, did I say the motion? I did the motion already, didn't I? Alderman, it was motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moseo. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Moseo.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passing, Carrie.
Item B, motion to approve a second amendment to license agreement between the city and Lake County for parking at the parking garage located at two twenty-five North County Street. Additional temporary license beginning August first, twenty twenty and terminating on November thirtieth, twenty twenty. The city agrees to temporarily add and license three hundred parking spaces in the Waukegan Municipal Garage, uh, Garage C located at two twenty-five North County Street, Waukegan, Illinois. The county agrees to pay the city fifty dollars per space per month to use these three hundred parking spaces. That being fifteen thousand dollars per month in the addition to any payments owed under the original agreement and First Amendment, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Kirkwood. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Moseo.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Item C, motion to release payment of two hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars to YCRG Trust for the city of Waukegan's share of the twenty twenty cash call required for ongoing engineering and maintenance at the closed Yeoman Creek landfill, and I so moved. I don't know if Dr. Schwab, uh, Treasurer Schwab would like to speak to any of that.
Well, twice, you know, the thing of it is that, uh, the original estimate was, uh, twenty-seven million dollars. Divided up over thirty, you know, thirty years, our, our share of each year's, uh, is, is approximately a third of the total cost. It's thirty-four some percentage, but about a third. So, and we get a cash call. So, we, what happened is we didn't have to take out a bond. The other way that could have, could have been done, or they could have, uh, asked us to do is to take out a nine million dollar bond. Yeah, okay, and they would take the proceeds off for that. Instead, it was a cash call, uh, twice a year. Uh, we're required by federal law, federal consent, uh, to a federal judge, uh, to pay the cash call, which is a third. And this is our, this is our payment ongoing.
Thank you, thank you, Doc Schwab. Thank you, Madam, uh, Alderman, Madam Chairman. Uh, there's a, uh, there's a motion by
I'd like to ask a question, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Turner.
Hey, thanks. Hey, just out of curiosity, who owns that landfill? We're paying, we're paying a maintenance fee. Is it, does it belong to the city of Waukegan?
It did. It was our la- it was our landfill. That's why we have, that's why we have to lease the largest portion of responsibility for what's in there.
Okay, who owns it now?
The pedal is currently held by the school district.
And so, they're paying a third, we're paying a third, and the county's paying the third, is that how it works?
Uh, DFI, the landfill operator is paying the remaining third, and then there are a couple of small holders.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, Park District was in there a little bit.
Park District, School District. The Park District bought out. They had just a smaller area where, uh, Edwards Field was in contention. Uh, they, 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 they bought out.
And then the school district is actually planning to put a solar panel field over here, is that right?
Correct.
About that, yeah. Okay, cool. Thanks.
Alright, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by, uh, second by Alderman Florian. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Moseo.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Motion passed, sir.
Item D, um, do I need to read in the new amount first before we, um, approve the motion?
Yes.
Okay, um, a motion to change the total premium amount from one million, three hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars to one million, three ninety-eight, one twenty-nine, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, uh, second by Alderman Rivera. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Moseo.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor. Motion passed.
Okay, I'll reread item D. Motion to follow the recommendation of the city's broker, the Owens Group, and authorize the execution of policy agreements providing workers' compensation, auto liability, public officials, employment practices coverage for the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one program year for a total premium amount of one million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The Owens Group is certified by the State of Illinois Central Management Services, CMS, as a minority business enterprise, MBE, and I so move.
Uh, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Seager. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Moseo.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Item E, motion to approve a change order with Crawford Murphy and Tilly Incorporated, consulting engineers for an amount of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars to bring the contract approved on December seventeenth, twenty eighteen in the amount of three hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars to a revised not to exceed amount of five hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred dollars payable from Series twenty eighteen Water and Sewer, Sewer Revenue Bonds for professional engineering services, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moseo. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Moseo.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Item F, motion to approve a contract with Arlington Construction Services, the lowest responsible bidder, and a not to exceed amount of a hundred and three thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars payable from Series twenty eighteen General Obligation Bonds for City Hall Security Improvements, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Kirkwood. Uh, any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Moseo.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Item G, motion to approve a contract with Unified Construction Group, the lowest responsible bidder in a not to exceed amount of one million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars payable from Series twenty eighteen General Obligation Bonds for Public Works Fueling Station Improvements, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Kirkwood. Any questions to the motion? Alderman Bolton.
Yeah, how many people or how many responded to bids that were put out, this particular bid?
It was fourteen or fifteen.
Oh, okay.
Fourteen to fifteen, um, yeah, okay, yeah. Uh, the, yeah, and this is going to be for those who, United Public Works, that gas, I call it the gas station. The station where they pump gas not only for city Waukegan employees, uh, public works, police, fire. We also have Lake County Sheriff's, uh, Lake County Health Department, uh, Waukegan Township, uh, and some other, uh, customers that we have. And that station is just completely outdated. It is, it's horrible.
Three years old.
It's, and it's roughly thirty, thirty years old, if it, Mr. Hanson, how old is that?
Uh, yes, good evening. Uh, that station is roughly about twenty-eight years old, I believe.
Yeah, and I know, uh, Katie, Katie, Katie has been working on this project for the last year and a half, trying to get it right. And, uh, we, and we really, really got to get this thing moving. And I know we're kind of under the gun from a time standpoint, I know, right, Katie?
Yeah, the weather, if we can't get going right now, Chris and I will be definitely behind the eight ball on this one.
Okay, so we're really going to be pushing, uh, the contractor to get this done. Uh, and, and I say this because the, uh, our customers, not just our employees, but our customers who come in there. It's just, it's, it's not a good situation, but I'm glad we got this in to, uh, to get this done right away. Alright, alright, roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Moseo.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor. Motion passed.
Motion's passing, Carrie.
Item H, motion to approve the city engineer to apply for, and then if accepted, for the mayor to execute a grant agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. DCO, DCEO, Rebuild Illinois Competitive Public Infrastructure Grant Program for the water plant projects ranging from two hundred and fifty thousand to five million. If awarded, this grant is a hundred percent reimbursable with no local match required, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Rivera. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Moseo.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Item I, motion to approve a contract with Tyler Technologies, a sole source provider in a not to exceed amount of ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars over a five-year period for an e-citation program, and that's coming out of the police department, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Seager. Any other questions to the motion?
I have a question.
Alderman Rivera.
Um, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, so this is, um, are we getting our traffic division back? Is that, is this what this is needed for, or can, can we elaborate why we would need, um, an e-citation program unless we are getting our traffic?
Our, sorry, Commander Breach?
So, we, uh, we have, we have two officers in our traffic division currently, and, uh, we would like to increase that. But we'll also look, and there's a, is a couple of things with this, we're trying to, uh, have a little, uh, less contact. For this is contactless, uh, citation. And then plus, it allows for smoother transition from the tickets into our records management system. And it also allows for an easier process for them going for it, and eliminates the majority of the stakes. Cause you can essentially scan a driver's license and registration card, all the up, all the information uploads without having to uh, enter it onto a ticket and then enter it into the computer system. It, it just makes it a much more efficient thing and it's where we see the ticket writing going to. So, this is a pilot program that's going to start us off fairly small.
Well, and, and thank you for the explanation. I, and I do understand the functionality, um, and the reason for the functionality. Um, but I guess my, um, my concern is that, um, you know, our, um, our traffic division is very small. Um, you go down Lewis Avenue, you go down Sheridan Road, uh, coming south, uh, after you get ba- uh, past Bowen Park. Uh, people are doing forty-five, fifty miles an hour. Um, same thing on Lewis Avenue. Lewis Avenue has been targeted as a, you know, fifty foul, fifty-five mile an hour comfortably with no issues. Uh, I, you know, I've been yelled at for going the speed limit on Lewis Avenue. Um, and, and, and it's concerning, not only for me, but for a lot of my residents, specifically the ones that live on Lewis Avenue where all of this traffic is, is speeding through. So, so my concern is that if we're gonna, I mean, if we're gonna invest money in technology, again, I understand the functionality, but we should be able to, you know, some of those savings, take them back and put a body in there so that we can have more people on the streets actually writing the tickets, traffic tickets.
I, I tell you what, if we could get a body for that amount, that'd be fantastic. Um, what we're trying to do is we're trying to just, just be a little more efficient with it. And then, you know, we are hitting those, we are targeting those major roadways now. Obviously, when, when COVID nineteen was in full effect, we were a little more cautious. And now we're having to reclaim our roadways and we're doing that step by step. So, hopefully, you know, our, our ultimate goal is for compliance with people. And if everybody complies, then we, you know, obviously we don't have to worry about that, but
Correct.
Then, when that doesn't happen, we've at least got these things in here to, uh, kind of aid in the process. Now, two of these are going to be dedicated to our, our full-time traffic officers, and one's going to be to our parking enforcement officer. So, that's already been targeted in that, and then we're going to try to allocate them to, uh, the people who write the majority of the tickets. So, they're not sitting in someone's hands who doesn't, you know, maybe more interested in drug work or something along those lines.
Correct.
If they take it right.
Uh, and, and are, is this a lease agreement that we're getting into?
No, uh, the, these handheld devices that we have, if we, you know, over the period of time when they, it's for five years, that technology may be done, but we've got that five it's for five years, that technology may be done, but we've got that five-year warranty on those. So it's, the, the majority of the cost of this is going towards the program itself and how easily it merges into our existing records management system.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much for that explanation, thank you.
Alderman Florian.
Um, I'm just curious, is this a budgeted expense? Was this planned on for this year?
So, uh, the state of Illinois has a DUI grant fund that they fund yearly, and typically will get around a hundred thousand dollars in that through DUIs and, and restitution that people will pay into this fund. Uh, I believe, and I'm, I'm not a hundred percent on this, but this leaves us, uh, for the outlay for this year still leaves us with, I think, thirty-some-a-thousand dollars left in that fund, and really restricted on what we're able to spend it on, it has to be towards traffic reduction or traffic accident, traffic crash reduction, uh, DUI enforcement, things along those lines, and this is, this complies with that.
Okay, thank you, and I'd like to add Sunset Avenue to Felix's list of roads that people like to speed on, so put that on your list, please.
We've got our traffic officers focusing on all of our main arteries, so yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get it under control.
Ed McAllister, too.
Everybody, believe me, we, we used to have, uh, I think when I first started as an alderman, I think we had about seven or eight bodies in that traffic division, and we used to do some serious, uh, you know, uh, speed limit, uh, patrolling, and, and at one point in time, we would have, I think, an officer at Sunset on, on Sunset, on Lewis, uh, sometimes on what we call our main arteries, North Avenue's, McAllister. The unfortunate part is we don't, but one of the things we're, we're looking at in, in our police department is how to move around our officers or get a little bit more efficient, and that means freeing them up from, you know, writing those tickets, y- you won't believe this, but, sorry to be pretty, please, uh, kind of explain, it takes roughly twenty-five, thirty minutes for, to write a, a ticket completely. Is that right? Or I'm a little bit too much?
Look, so, a, a typical traffic stop, um, people expect that to be completed in seven to twelve minutes. Now, what we run into, uh, is depending on what type of ticket you're writing, also determines whether or not if you have to write multiple tickets or you can put it on one type of ticket. So either way, this will, this will cut that down, and, you know, keep in mind, going forward, we're gonna, uh, uh, starting the twenty-second, the state of Illinois has funded the seatbelts programs. We plan on having, uh, a lot of enforcement over the next few weeks through, uh, through the fall, but we're gonna, we've got a lot of details that we're gonna be pissing up and doing.
So, to answer your questions, Alderman, we're coming.
Mayor.
Now, yes, who said mayor?
Alderman Mozzio.
Alderman Mozzio.
Back me up on this, Alderman Newsome, back me up on this, a number-one complaint residence, everybody speeding, and everybody wants a stop sign. I'm just, in my experience up here, and I'm not saying it's not warranted, but everybody speeds. We have so many people on the road, everybody's got a car now, you know, this city's an old city that was, you know, not meant probably hold a hundred thousand people within its proper area, and it's a, it's an arduous task. I know I've, I've talked to the police department ad nauseam about this i- in my prior years, so it's an ongoing. And you know what happened? When I first got elected, Alderman Rickert said, "Your number-one complaint will be everybody speeding." That was seventeen years ago.
Uh, he was right.
A little history lesson.
Yeah, a little history lesson, I tell you, something else, Alderman, you want, you want the traffic enforcement, but you know who's going to get the tickets?
Yeah.
The residents, the people on the block, so just, I'm, I'm cautioning you, be ready, but.
That's what I wanted to add, it's not just the main arteries, it's in the neighborhoods, people are running stop signs and everything. And it's the people that live there, it's the people that live there, so.
That, that called you, I had a person call me the next day, they got a ticket, and called me back and said, "Well, I don't want me to get a ticket."
All right, thank you, everybody, all right, we, we have a motion, a second on the floor, roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
For surely, aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Item J, motion authorizing the retention of Clark Baird Smith LLC to provide legal services relative to labor management matters, and I so move, and, um, Corporation Council, can you speak to that, please?
Let's get emotional, let's get emotional, you got a motion, you got a motion, Alderman Newsome, second, Alderman Kirkwood. Uh, Bob, would you go ahead and speak to that?
Sure, we've, um, a, a disciplinary matter came up about a year, year and a half ago, and the, uh, Clark Baird Smith was brought in with what was thought to be a one-off, um, assignment. Since then, there have been some additional matters that have come out of that original disciplinary matter, so as a result, we need to hire them on a, on a more ongoing basis, so we thought we would simply put them on the list, um, and formalize the relationship a little more fully. They've been working for the city, they do very, very good work.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Item K, motion to approve zoning calendar two-six-zero-five, the preliminary and final plat of Jibita subdivision two-nine-four Hanlon Road, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman, no, motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Seager.
Mayor, I'd like to hold that over, um, I've had some requests from ninth ward residents, there was even one that should have been read tonight, um, so can we just hold that over to the next meeting?
Sure, sure, uh, I, so then L, M, N, and O, all the same, aren't they?
No, no, this is K.
This is K.
Oh, duh, duh, okay, K is held over, okay, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, uh, the, uh, item K is being held by Alderman Taylor.
Yeah.
You, you know, you guys are missing me, I'm trying to look, I'm so used to looking this way.
I know.
I'm, thank you.
Okay, um, item L, motion to approve zoning calendar two-six-zero-six, a conditional use permit for recreational cannabis craft growers at ninety-nine West Greenwood Avenue.
I'll make the motion.
All right, most of, yeah, most of Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Kirkwood, any questions to the motion?
Just a few comments. Um, we haven't had business for two months in this city, I don't know what our deficit will be. We have a business that wants to come in into a vacant building that will generate a tremendous amount of tax revenue and water revenue, and increase the value of the land. This vacant, this building's been vacant for twenty-five years, it will provide thirty jobs. Uh, the first year, the projected, uh, tax revenue, it's a three percent tax, they're a wholesaler, they're not a, it's not a dispensary, it's a, it's a wholesaler, will be about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, and that will only continue to grow, because right now they have a limit on how many plants they can have. Um, so, not only this business, but going forward, we need to take down there any business that wants to come to Waukegan and take them, because we don't know how many of our other businesses are gonna get back up and running. Here we have a business that's gonna come in, not asking for any deals, anything like that. It's the most regulated business in the state of Illinois, I think we all know that, that and gaming is, is, is revenue, is so heavily regulated by the state, uh, to me, um, it's a no-brainer. Just as a, just as a comparison, this business will generate as much tax revenue, as many jobs as the wallboard factory, in fact, it will probably be more than the wallboard factory on the lake, and be a lot less of a headache, no trucks ruining our roads, no pollution in the air, et cetera, et cetera. Just wanted to give a little bit of backstory on it, that's all.
Oh, we got, uh, Alderman, uh, uh, Bolton and Alderman Rivera.
Um, yeah, talking with many, especially the mayor about this issue, I am definitely not in support of cannabis, because I work personally, up close and personally, with individuals and families every day that has been destroyed by marijuana, and we know, but on the other hand, I validate that point that Mozzio has made, when we look at profits, the other cities around us, all that money is going in, we definitely need to draw money into our city, and then also, we think of, the other objective of this is, when I think about marijuana, which comes from cannabis, or it's cannabinoi, excuse me, we know that there, it also is an understudy that is good for those that are dealing with cancer, which needless to say, I just lost my husband to cancer, um, and it's also helps with anxiety, so of course, we're talking about cannabinoi that doesn't have THC in it. So, yeah, I really validate the point, we need to bring business into our city, but I just want to personally, that you all know, my position, especially my constituents, I'm not in support of cannabis, but I definitely am supportive of the objective, thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Uh, thank you, um, I, I just wanna comment, um, that, uh, you know, I, I, I put this out, as soon as I found out, I put this out there, I didn't get, um, too many negatives, I got so, a, a lot of positives, uh, regarding, um, this venture. I, I do understand the monetary value, um, the only concern that I have is with the process and how it occurred. Um, I wasn't told about this until, I wanna say, late February, um, and I believe it's been ongoing since, uh, August of last year, uh, maybe even September, I'm unsure. Um, but, but when, when situations like this, I, I mean, this is not a, um, it's not like, um, like a, a gas station going up on the corner, um, i- if, if I, in the future, if things that affect the ward um, are coming, I would like to get, you know, a little bit more of a heads up. Um, i- i- in order to be more informed when I get asked regarding these, these situations. Um, luckily, a- a- again, because of all the, uh, COVID and everyone was shut down, I was able to at least, uh, obtain some information very quickly before I started getting the questions. Um, a- and, and again, put in a position where I can answer them, but in the future, I would like to be able to have a little bit more notice of situations like this that are, again, occurring in my ward. And I understand that, um, when I, when I talked to, um, uh, I, I think it was Noel, um, and I asked her, um, she said that, you know, the city encourages these people to get ahold of the alderman and talk to them, um, but as a city employee, I would hope that my employer would be the one contacting me and giving me the information.
Alderman, I, I, I guess I'm kind of confused when you said that you were not informed, or you heard about this, you heard that this came in last year, to be honest, sir, that wasn't even the first business they wanted. There was, there was two other businesses for that building who was bought by the person. We found out early, I think, January, February, so I'm, I'm kind of confused, who told you that this came in last year? This wasn't even, that, this particular business was not slated for that business, for that building. There was another business that the owner came in for something on, so whomever told you that it came in last year was incorrect, because if you notice, the license wasn't even available until early beginning of this year. So, w- once we find things out, and, and believe me, I am the most, uh, I think I am the most sensitive person when it comes to, as a mayor, about informing all the who goes in his and her ward. Uh, I kind of, you know, that's something that most mayors, all the mayors of, since I've been here, have done to me and others, so, uh, I, I'm ventured to find out who informed you that we were talking about this building and this particular pro, this particular use of the building early part of twenty-nineteen, and when we, we were not, we found out about this opportunity, I think about, oh, early February, maybe late February, early March, that's when I, that's when I personally found out and met with the individuals, and that was just an inquiry, and then we told them to process her.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, all right, uh, Alderman Turner.
Thanks a lot, you know, while you guys were talking, it just reoccurred to me, what was the name of that, um, the car dealership that we gave a tax rebate to?
Elite.
Elite, now.
They bought the building.
Yeah, so, so Elite gets a tax break on the Elite business, and then they go and buy this building, and they open up a reefer factory, is that how that works?
They bought the building first.
No, no, let's stop, everybody, hold on a second, they own the building, the business is by someone else. So Elite is not, uh, that I know of, and you say Elite, that's not the application that I have, but the owners of the building is a female, of the owners of the business, if I'm not mistaken, and I think Noel's on, is, is female-owned.
Mayor, it's just minority-owned, female-owned.
Yeah, I mean, who, who told you that Elite was the business owner here?
I don't know.
No, 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 that, they're, I think they're the property owner, because.
Yeah, this, yeah, so, I mean, the, uh, the, we can't stop, nor can you stop anybody from buying a building, but let's be clear, I think Alderman Mozzio put it first, that building had sat easily in the seventh ward, well, over twenty-some years, someone bought it, and, uh, actually, what was gonna go in at one time was gonna be a, one, one person that came to us probably early, mid-part of twenty-nineteen was a manufacturing company.
I'm not wondering that, I, I, I just asked a question about the relationship between Elite Motors and, and this building and this business, if it's non-existent, that's.
Yeah, that's it, it's not exist, I mean, but Noel, Noel, Noel's on, on the line, go ahead, Noel.
Hey, yes, thank you, um, Elite does own the building, they purchased the building before city council approved the sales tax rebate agreement with them, they originally informed us they wanted to move their auto maintenance and repair shop to that location, they would have had to go through a conditional use permit process for that, and while they were considering that, they also started marketing the building to other potential users. There have been a number of inquiries, but they made an arrangement with this particular business for this business to locate there if they get the state license.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, and, and Noel, while you're on the line, just to answer Alderman Rivera's questions about him not being informed about this, who was the first person that came to us about that building, it wasn't, they wanted to put something there, it was a manufacturing company, correct?
There have been a bunch of them, there were some interests from some, um, hemp processing companies that had interest there. Um, there was a, uh, a retail, um, craft brewery, like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, that's right.
Um, there have been a number of folks that are interested, but nobody had actually negotiated a lease with the landlord until this one, um, so this one has a deal set, if they get their license, they can, they can open up. Um, now, there have been, since we started talking about cannabis, when the state first passed the legislation, there have been many businesses, cannabis businesses, um, whether, um, growers or, or transporters or retail outlets, um, dispensaries that have wanted to locate in Waukegan and have come to talk to us. This was one that talked to us earlier and wanted to know, um, our ordinances, whether we would allow this type of use and what kinds of zoning districts we would permit it in, and so we had explained the conditional use permit process, which is required of any cannabis business in Waukegan. We'd explain that to them along the way, but they didn't have a location until this winter, and that was the time at which we started talking to the alderman, that this was a location in their ward. Until that time, we didn't know where they would go, there, there are districts that would permit it with conditional use permits in a number of different wards, and they were looking at a number of different sites.
Thank you, Noel, Alderman Rivera, I just want to really clear that up, make sure, we, I would never, ever do that to any alderman, because I understand the importance of that, who you have to, uh, being on the front lines, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Noel, we got Alderman Taylor, then we'll go for the, uh, roll call, Alderman Taylor.
Question, um, how many, like, craft, um, like this will we have, and how many dispensaries will we have, have we decided that yet, or, um, are we just taking them on a case-by-case basis?
Uh, I, 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 I'm going to, I'm going to answer that one, Noel, you can probably give details. Right now is more of a case-by-case. Right now is more of a case by case basis, but don't, don't, let's not remember, let's not forget. Where did we assign those to? And Noel, if I'm not mistaken, was Fountain Square?
Uh, the dispensaries could locate in Fountain Square in, um, the business district or in the downtown, the B four and B five district. That's dispensary only and that's with the conditional use permit. We did not put a number, um, of restriction on the number of license, uh, the number of locations for any of those uses. Because there are issues in the state law and the issuance of licenses by the state that would naturally restrict them. But any of the uses are conditional use permits. Now, the non-retail operations, whether it's the craft grower or the, um, the larger scale growing operation. Or the distribution or the infusion where they make products with the cannabis. Those are all in the I one and I two districts, also as conditional uses. So any of them require the CUP.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, no other questions, roll call please.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mosio.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Motion passed, sir.
Alrighty, item M. Motion to approve zoning calendar two six zero seven, a variance of eight hundred and ninety, eight hundred and ninety-five feet. From the one thousand foot setback requirement from a public park, going park for recreational, recreational cannabis craft grower. At ninety-nine West Greenwood Avenue.
Most of all, the most of all, second by Alderman Rivera, correction, most of all, Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Mosio, any other questions? Roll call please.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mosio.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
A question, the park district was okay with this, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi. Thank you. Motion passed.
Item N, motion to approve zoning calendar twenty-six oh nine, an amendment to conditional. Uh, an amendment to condition number four of section two of CUP ordinance. Eighteen dash zero dash one oh eight, under zoning calendar two five six three. For True North Energy LLC, one North Green Bay Road and ISO move. This is for the new gas station that previously was going to be Circle K. At the corner, at the corner of Green Bay and Washington Street.
Oh, oh, Waukegan, oh, Waukegan Tire.
Yes.
Correct.
Everybody, all right, motion by Alderman, uh, Newsom, second by Alderman Seager, any other questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mosio.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Item O, motion to approve zoning calendar two six one zero, the preliminary and final plat of Pershing subdivision. Eight twenty-five North Pershing Road and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom. Is, is this, is this the sixth or seventh ward? I think it's this, I think it's the seventh ward.
Yeah, it's the seventh.
All right, so I'm gonna do motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Rivera, any other questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Question, question mayor, question.
Alderman Taylor.
Um, I am totally in agreement with giving them the land. But are we, are they paying the expenses like the attorney fees and the surveying fees? Or are we kind of incorporating them into our, you know, into city fees?
Um.
I don't know that that issue has been, uh, laid out in the, this package, you know, they still have, we still have to go through the rest of the process for the subdivision. This is just an agreement in principle at this point.
Well, we, we, we can get those figured out Alderman and I'll let you know.
We can arrange that with, if you'd like, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just like to know, you know, for that reason.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you ma'am. Roll call please.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mosio.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Okay, motion did pass, just correction, uh, Alderman Turner, that was the sixth ward, I, I thought it was seven two, so we, we're close Felix. All right, that, that was the, the, that would have been the sixth ward for that, so next time it comes about Alderman Turner, we can go to. And I, I suggest, man, they do some remarkable things, what they make down there. I'm gonna give you one of them, you know, the U-Haul, the U-Haul lock, the little latch, they make that down there. They have a con, they have, uh, one of their, uh, customers is U-Haul, quite interesting. But anyway, uh, with that being said, audience time, or audience, I mean, audience, not odd. Or, number eight, ordinance, knowing, ordinances, there being none, closing items, Alderman's time, madam clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Yeah, so just wanted to say congratulations to all our graduates of 2020. I just want to encourage you to walk into your purpose and your gifting. Uh, now my response to the systemic racism reform, I just want to let, uh, those of you that had wondered what is Waukegan doing? In addressing this issue, I just want to let you know that we just, uh, voted and upgraded for our police officers to have body cams. And then also they're, uh, enhancing their knowledge and by, uh, taking diversity training, I understand. And, um, just want to let you all know, that's a couple of things that we are doing, as well as planning on some other issues. And then I want to announce in the first ward, uh, on June nineteenth, between six and seven thirty PM. There will be a rally at the JIC Community Development. They're right there on Genesee, and that will also be in support of Black Lives Matters. And they also will be supporting, uh, the social distancing. And then of course, as mayor already announced on Juneteenth, which is June twentieth, there will also be a march. And so I definitely will be there to support that. And let's see. That's all I have for now, thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Seager.
Yes, at this, at this time, I'd like to send out my condolences. And, um, to the Al Maycheck family. He was on North Chicago Alderman at one time, he had thirty-five years with US Steel. Um, and he lived in my ward, Mr. And Mrs. Maycheck. They're no longer with us, God bless the family. He was, uh, quite a guy. He also was on the board for Kylie Center. Uh, among other, um, associations. And it's just too bad, but they're both been gone. Again, I say, I send out my condolences to the family, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mosio.
Uh, yeah, sort of talking with Alderman Bolton said about the. Our temp, our current temperature in this country. Uh, I'm not going to get into too much in a virtual meeting, it's too much, too hard to do, I'd rather do it in person. We get back into live into a, uh, a, a regular council meeting. But, uh, just a couple of things, our, our police department, I think, has made strides. Uh, to try to get a better relationship with the community. We didn't get a consent decree from the justice department, we weren't forced into it. We voluntarily entered into it, uh, with them. I think that shows, uh, we weren't told what we had to do, we sat down, um, and, uh, hashed some things out. And had a working relationship with the justice department to try to make things better. I think they have gotten better. And now, do things happen that we have to correct? Absolutely, it's not a perfect system, I think we all know that. Like I said, I'm not going to get too much into that, um, uh, in a virtual meeting. Uh, just another thing I would like to, on a personal note, which I very rarely do, I'd like to wish my wife a happy anniversary. Um, twenty-four years ago, um, I tricked her into marrying me on this day. Um, and it's been twenty-five, twenty-four years, uh, of marriage for me. Uh, she's a wonderful wife and a wonderful mother. I haven't been right since I said I do though, not here, maybe other places, but not at twenty-seven, twenty-one Brookside Avenue. Thank you, bye.
You are foolish, Greg.
Congratulations, Greg.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, madam clerk. Uh, a couple of things, I want to continue to encourage all of the residents in the state of Waukegan to wear your mask when you're out and about. And practice, uh, social distancing. If we're going to defeat this, uh, coronavirus, we need to adhere to some of the guidelines and not take anything for granted. Uh, it's been said that we'll all know someone personally that dies from this, uh, Corona. And I experienced that firsthand, uh, this past week. Uh, my cousin passed away because of the virus and she contracted it from her son and his girlfriend. And at fifty-three years of age, that's very young. So we want to make sure that we don't know where it comes from, how you can contract it, but we need to make sure we practice. The social distancing, as well as keeping our mouths covered and hands and keep washing the techniques that they talk about. Also, I want to continue to wish a happy birthday, uh, for our World War II veteran that stays at five oh one judge, Ms. Nelson. We, uh, had a drive-by parade on Saturday, uh, at ninety-five years young, uh, still very alert. Uh, we really appreciate, uh, his service to our country. And then also in July, we're still working on trying to do a Zoom meeting for the fourth ward. Uh, so once again, uh, those individuals in the fourth ward, you know how to contact me at eight four 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 eight four nine two seven three. And we want to continue to encourage those buildings that are boarded up. Uh, we, we need to look at doing something about those boarded up buildings, even though they may be open, it just doesn't look good for the city. Uh, whether it's Dunkin' Donuts or Goose Mobile, any of those places that were hit, uh, that Sunday. So we need to come up with some idea, whether we look at some of our street artists and some other people that we will. Uh, we can do some colorful things like they've done in the city of, uh, Chicago. Uh, so we just don't have boards up, uh, around, uh, those particular businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, madam clerk, I have a couple of items. The first one, um, the renewal applications for the senior frees, disabled persons and disabled veterans home state exemptions. Will not be required this year due to the COVID. Lake County residents who in twenty nineteen applied for and received the senior citizens frees home state exemption. The home state exemption for persons with disabilities. And the standard home state exemptions for veterans with disabilities will not be required. You don't have to reapply, uh, they will, uh, normally residents who qualify for those exemptions would need to, um, reapply. However, June fifth, Illinois Governor JB Prisker signed into law legislation. That grants counties the option of approving renewals without applications. Clean sweep for the fifth ward will be Tuesday, June thirtieth. It will start, uh, at eight AM to three PM and it will be at the corner of Grand Avenue and Yelman. Uh, there are certain items that you cannot bring to put in the dumpster. Uh, they consist of yard waste, liquids, tree trumps, tree trunks, concrete, brickstone, flammable materials and things of that nature. Uh, car parts are not, uh, accepted either. There will also be an additional separate truck that you can bring tires and electronics if you'd like to get rid of those items. Um, I will have the flyer posted on my website starting tomorrow. If you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call at eight four seven four nine four four nine zero. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Turner.
Great, thank you, madam clerk. Uh, let's see, in the sixth ward, I want to first welcome my neighbor, Mr. Hector Escobar over on Stewart Street. To, uh, service on the Waukegan Public Library Board. Uh, think he's gonna do a great job over there and I'm always, uh, delighted to have one of our neighbors from the sixth ward participate in city government. So thank you. I'm gonna ask and remind, uh, everyone, sixth ward and beyond, uh, please support our businesses. We have seven business districts in the sixth ward, many of our restaurants are open for pickup. Uh, and takeout delivery or pickup and deliveries, and also now we have several that are doing, um, outdoor seating. So we start over with Hillary's BBQ on Lewis, comes around on Sunset to the Sunset House Restaurant down on Greenwood. La Fandita, uh, is doing, um, outdoor seating, we have, uh, Glenford Tap and Grill, Louis Restaurant. Papa Marcos down on Grant. So all those businesses could use your business, um, as they try to recover from the COVID nineteen issues. Or situation, excuse me. Uh, also, you may remember several weeks ago, I announced that there was a, um. A fruit and vegetable stand that opened at the corner of Greenwood and, uh, Walnut, Mr. Nava, Nava's Produce. Uh, we've been able to negotiate, uh, with the owner of the old Patty Cake Nursery School. And the intention now is, uh, and they, and they've already begun working towards starting a process to move Mr. Nava into that space. And create a small neighborhood grocery store, so we're very excited about that. And at the same time, uh, La Fandita Restaurant, the owners, uh, of that, uh, building and business. Uh, purchased the already or the old defunct car wash at the corner of, uh, Greenwood and Jackson Street. They're cleaning it, refurbishing it, yes, over the weekend, they were in there getting the machinery ready and they're, they're targeting to open for business. Um, as early as July first, so congratulations and thanks, uh, for the efforts by those business owners in investing in our, uh, their businesses in our community. Uh, number four, moving down to the southern end of, uh, more southernly direction of, uh, the sixth ward in the area of Franklin and. Uh, North Avenue, uh, we have the Agave Restaurant also, uh, now that one's, that one's closed, uh, for refurbishment. They painted the building red and white, it's, it's beautiful. Tomorrow, I'm gonna have a guy over there doing the cleanup, um, of that entire block, both sides of the street, there's a lot of, um. Uh, weeds growing in the sidewalk, so I'm sending somebody over here to clean it out, as well as, uh, cut bushes down to the isolated property at eight eighteen North Avenue. Looking forward to cleaning up that area and, uh, finally, and not least. I want to give kudos to our, uh, two particular officers on our police department. Um, early this morning, I was out, as I often am, and it was just after dawn. I observed, uh, one of our neighbors who was like way too inebriated, I mean, this guy was, he was drunk. Um, and, uh, I had the police come and make contact with him, I, you know, concerned for his safety. Um, and anyway, two officers responded, Officer, um, Alexander and, uh, Cancino. They did a brief interview with the guy, but you know what struck me was, I mean, it was obvious, they could have wrote him or, or arrested him for being drunk in public. Or had him transported to the hospital or something, but they didn't. They actually walked him all the way home, they put him in a car, they walked him down the street, the two of them, walked him all the way home. Made sure he got in the house to his fam, really impressed me and further illustrated the caliber of officers that we have working in Waukegan Police Department. So I want to thank those two officers and give them outstanding. That's what I have for the sixth ward, thank you all very much, good night.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman Rivera.
Um, thank you, madam clerk, um, I would like to first start off by reading, uh, some recognition that I received. Uh, this is from, uh, one of, uh, our residents in the seventh ward, Mr. Lopez. Uh, and he writes, um, Alderman Rivera, I want to let you know, Dave. Uh, and he writes, um, Alderman Rivera, I want to let you know Dave Bethke came out and fixed the problem. He and his crew did an excellent job going above and beyond. Mr. Bethke was very helpful and explained everything that was going wrong and the remedies used to fix the problem. The work was quick and thorough. Thank you for your assistance. You have an excellent Public Works crew. Uh, thank you, Mr. Lopez. Um, and again, uh, kudos to, um, Dave, every time, every interaction that I've had with this gentleman, he, he's always exceeded my expectation, and that's very hard to do. Um, Sam, you know that, right? Coming from a customer service, uh, uh, background. But, uh, but no, uh, Dave, excellent, uh, commu- communicator. Um, a, a lot of times when you communicate, um, and you're technical, you lose the audience. Um, Dave brings it down and, you know, so even I can understand it. So kudos to Dave. Um, and, um, the next thing I wanted to bring up, uh, and it was already brought up, uh, uh, by, um, Alderman Kirkwood regarding, uh, COVID nineteen. Uh, we still have to continue, um, to be mindful. Um, we still have to remember, a- and it's easy to forget. I've forgotten myself. Uh, I've gotten out of the car. I'm halfway to the door at the store and I remember, oops, no mask. I'm turning around. Um, so a- a- again, it's very, very easy, but we have to remind ourselves and we have to continue, um, I believe as leaders to set the example, and every time we go out there, we are, you know, definitely wearing our masks. Um, and the, uh, third thing I wanted to bring up was, uh, the census. It seems like we've totally forgotten about that, but again, very, very important, and I believe we have until the first or the second week in August to have that completed. Um, so again, just encouraging everyone to go out, um, please fill out your census, make yourself count. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, I'd like to echo, um, what Alderman Rivera said about, uh, the census. Importantly, we need to keep that in our, our minds going forward so we get what's coming to us um, from the federal government and the state government. Um, I'd like to also echo what he said about, um, the face masks and continuing to be aware of that. And I offer, um, Alderman Kirkwood, my condolences for your loss and your cousin. That's a, a very sad thing to go through, especially with this situation because you don't get to visit them in the hospital. You don't get to have a proper home-going celebration. It's just a, a difficult time for the family, so I, I offer you my condolences for that. Um, I'd like to thank Public Works. I had a, a clean sweep a couple of weeks ago in my ward. It was a huge success. We ended up filling two dumpsters, not just one, so it was obviously a much-needed, um, thing for my residents. Um, I'd like to publicly thank Mike Hewitt, Pat Needham at Public Works for making it happen. The two gentlemen that were there that day were Damon Washington and Ruben Rivera. They were just great, very busy the whole time. Um, and then one of my residents, Melissa Barrett, actually stood in in my place. I was at work when it was taking place and she was there and organized everybody. She's awesome. So I just wanted to thank everyone for helping me make that happen. Um, while, uh, it's sad, I want to say I agree with the mayor that we do need to postpone our summer events until we see what's going on, uh, with this virus and where our numbers are. And I, I think that's a very wise move, um, for the city to make. We do need to keep those numbers coming down. I encourage people to go get tested. I know they moved the testing site, so I think it's taken people a little while to get used to the new site. But the test is fast, easy and painless. It's, it's really simple. Um, they're all, you know, trained very well. You're in and out of there in minutes. It's just a really easy process to go through, so I encourage people to get tested so we have more out there and, and bring our, our percentage down. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the economy going forward. I know we, um, got issues with our city budget, but I also wanted to talk about, I, I was reading an article about the rental situation in the country, and I know we have quite a few rentals in Waukegan. So one half of the forty-three million rentals in the United States are owned by small businesses, um, not by huge corporations. So someone who owns one, two, whatever, a handful of properties. Um, their margins are very thin. In other words, the, the profit they make is, is not a huge profit. They only get nine cents of every dollar of rent. Um, everything else goes to their expenses, uh, mortgages, taxes, repairs, so on. Um, I think there's a chance that we may see, you know, because people can't pay their rent, then the owner ends up defaulting. That gets in turn a problem for the lender who lent the money to begin with. So I'm just concerned this could add to the issues we have going on in Waukegan. And it's just something we need to be thinking about, I believe, going forward. Um, and also, um, there was a great article in, uh, one of the recent Cranes Chicago Businesses. Um, and, um, there, it's, he's talking about Chicago, but I think this applies to us also. Um, it's a, a guy who writes a column every paper, and this is Greg Hines. Um, and he says the, the, um, situation, you know, with, um, what happened with Mr. Floyd and, and, and so on in the protests. Um, he said, "We need to take advantage of this moment and use the energy it's generated, but how and for what?" And he says, "The bigger part of what needs to be done now belongs not to protesters but to the political class, the governors, mayors and legislators and congressmen who are supposed to run this country. They need to act now." After talking to a cross-section of people, activists, politicians alike, the needed action seems to fall in two categories: fundamental lasting police and criminal justice reform and economic development that gives hope even to people from the least advantaged neighborhood." So he says, "What kind of reforms?" Kwame Raoul is saying it's time to take a serious look at statewide police licensing. His argument is that just like a bad lawyer can have a license lifted by the Illinois Attorney Registration and Disciplinary Commission, a bad cop ought to be sidelined without going through less than impartial local agencies. There's a state representative out of Chicago, Cam Buckner, who's proposing lowering the standard for excessive force from unreasonable to unnecessary. He also wants a special prosecutor, not the local state's attorney, to take a look at any case involving homicide by an officer. So I just wanted to put that out there as, um, some of the stuff that's going on around us um, to try to address this in addition to, um, things Alderman Bolton mentioned about what is happening here in Waukegan. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Taylor.
I too would like to offer Alderman Kirkwood, um, my condolences, um, for the loss in your family. I mean, I think it's, it's so brave of you to share that with the city because I think it is true that people think it won't happen to them, and you've now put a face on that for us, so I sincerely thank you for that. Um, I just want to remind people not just to wear the masks, but what I'm seeing a lot of is the masks are not being worn correctly. Wearing them below your nose does not necessarily help or just using them as kind of a chin rest. Um, they need to be worn over the face, covering your nose and your mouth. Um, for the ninth ward, um, I'm hoping some of the aldermen will come out this Saturday at ten A M. We have a parade for a little boy that all of you have met at council. Um, he's a little four-year-old boy that, um, came with the E T O group that is suffering from leukemia. And there will be a parade, um, by the, um, Fire Station Two, starting at ten A M. this Saturday. Um, and I hope, like I said, any of you that can come, please let's support this little boy and his brother. They both turn, they're four and two, um, both on the same day, so let's go out and support them. Um, the ninth ward, we will be having a cleanup. Um, we had dates scheduled for April, for May. I'm still working out those dates, and as soon as I have them, I will post them so that everybody knows when the ward cleanup is. Um, just like many of the other aldermen, we're all kind of fighting for dates right now. So look for that coming up soon. I think everything else has been said by the other aldermen, so I'll leave it like that, and thank you for tonight. It was, it was a nice meeting.
What was the date of the parade, Ann? I'm sorry.
It's this Saturday, June twentieth.
A- and you said the fire station is the kickoff?
It's right, it's right at the fire station, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did you say Fire Station Two?
Fire Station Two, which is right off of McGaw Road, which is off of Oak Plain.
McGaw and Candlestick, is right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get that.
I, I would love to support it, but I have.
Yeah, he, you know, I'm just trying to get as many to come because, um, I know you've all met him and we, we've been introduced to him. And a matter of fact, it came up, um, he was just diagnosed as like April or August sixth of last year, and it was right at that E T O meeting that we got introduced to him. So he's been through a year of chemotherapy now and he's had some rough times. So, you know, anybody that can come out and support him, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Good time.
Same for residents.
It's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be ten o'clock this Saturday, the twentieth. Is, the Saturday is not the twentieth, is it?
No.
No, I'm sorry.
No.
This Saturday, this Saturday is the nineteenth.
No, 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 it's not. Um, Saturday is the twentieth.
It is the twentieth, yeah.
Yeah.
It is the twentieth.
So this Saturday, June the twentieth, at ten o'clock, and Fire Station Two is located at McGaw and Candlestick, right on the corner. If you take Oak Plain Road to McGaw, make a left, you won't, if you pass the Fire Station, then you really need some glasses.
And that's where the gathering place will be, and then we'll get an order going from there.
All right, all right then. So that's the first thing. One, Greg, you showed my thunder. Wanted to, uh, I think on all on behalf of the mayor's office and the rest of your colleagues up here, congratulations to you and your beautiful bride for twenty-four years, uh, dedicated service to her. So congratulations, sir. Uh, condolences to firefighter Greg Squires. Uh, we called him Miss Annie Squires, I, I grew up with. Um, she passed today and their family is going through their, uh, you know, their, their grieving process and setting up, setting up services. Alderman, I will send that out to you as we go on. As you know, firefighter Squires is with twenty-some years on the fire department and just an awesome guy here.
Excuse me, ma'am, who, like, who was it in his family?
His mom. His mom passed, yes. Miss, uh, we call him Miss Annie Squires. That's how you, you used to pronounce it when we was kids. How you doing, Miss Annie Squires? But that was, uh, Miss Annie Squires was to many, many young men who grew up in, on the southeast side of, of the city of Waukegan. Uh, the Family Dollar Store, uh, I called them at Jackson in Washington and I spoke with him within, uh, within the next, within, by the end of this week or early next week, they should be up and, and running. Their computer system is going through some changes, so that's what that is. I want to knock on this door. Census twenty twenty, Census twenty twenty, that's the key. So thank you, Alderman, all for your help in pushing this message out. With that being said, we have a motion on the floor by Alderman Rivera and second by Alderman Taylor to adjourn. Are there any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
No.
All right.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call. Roll call.
Gonna do a roll call?
Yes. It's gotta be roll call. New rules.
New rule. Oh, that's right. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Yeah.
Alderman Seager.
He's nodding his head.
Seager?
He's on the mound. We got, we got five votes to end this. Let's go.
All right.
Mosio.
Hi.
Kirkwood.
All right, thanks, everybody, for your prayers.
Newsome.
Hi.
Turner.
Yeah, I want to hold this one over until next week.
Rivera.
Hi.
Florian.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
I believe you have enough.
All right, the motion's, the motion's passing, Carrie. It was great having fun with everybody.
Good night.
Talk to you.